Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting of the October, I don't know what today is.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth Board of Education Order. We're glad to see everybody here. First, we would like to ask Ms. Crowe if she would do an invocation and then we'll pledge. If everybody will rise.
Heavenly Father, we are so blessed in America with so many opportunities. We're blessed as a country and it's, we need your guidance in helping us to understand how to communicate better with each other, to make wise decisions for our children in the future, for us to learn to share, to know that we all have to sacrifice to make things better for everybody. Help us to have leaders in our country that will look forward, look to the future and make good use of their, the assets that we have in this community and in the country. In our own community, we have been so blessed, but a lot of what's happened in our country, in our community, is what's happened in our school system. And we thank you for helping us in the past, have good leaders who have brought us to where we are now. But most of all, we ask your blessing upon the very people who stand in our classrooms every day, who teach our children, who have had a lot of change in their lives, that had a lot of burdens in the past, as the whole staff has in our school system. And we, we ask your blessing upon them and your help with them as they tackle what they have to do every day in the classroom with our, with our students. We also ask that you be with those who are suffering, who have had relatives who are ill in hospital, for those that have lost loved ones. We have many that are connected to our school community that are in that situation right now. We ask that your blessing is with them as well. We also ask your blessing upon those soldiers that are across the seas and in our country that, that protect us every day and help us to maintain the freedom that we have and the liberties that we have. Lead us and guide us and direct us as a board tonight as we make decisions on behalf of our school system and our students and our community. We, we appreciate everything that you've given us and we also ask that you are with us each day. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, on to the best part of the meeting, recognitions with Mr. Joey Perkel.
Good afternoon. It's always a pleasure to be able to recognize folks in our system, students and staff members for the great things that they have done. And so we act as we're going to do that this very minute. So we have a lot of recognitions this evening. Our first recognition comes from the U.S. Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan. Two hundred and eighty-six schools were recognized as national blue ribbon schools based on their overall academic excellence for their progress in improving student academic achievement. One of those schools just happened to be our very own Dave's Creek Elementary School. We'd like to say congratulations to the entire staff at Dave's Creek Elementary for their dedication and hard work. And we'd also like to ask that the staff members from Dave's Creek, if you would, please stand. So we have staff members here from Dave's Creek. Could you please stand so we can recognize you? And we would ask that their principal, Mr. Eric Ashton, if he would please come forward so that we can recognize him as well.
Our next recognition comes from the Technology Association of Georgia. The Technology Association of Georgia, along with Technology Association of Georgia Education Collaborative, has awarded Forsyth Central High School's STEM Academy the 2013 Georgia High School STEM Education Award. This is the second year for this award presentation, which was created to recognize and honor individuals and organizations for their outstanding effort and achievement in supporting and promoting STEM education in Georgia. We are extremely proud of this award and this honor for Forsyth Central High School and for us as a school district. We congratulate them and their staff for their hard work and dedication. At this time, I'd like to ask all of the Forsyth Central STEM teachers, if you would please, and we'll ask you if you'll come down in this side of the room and move across in this direction, if all of the Forsyth Central STEM teachers, along with their principal, Mr. Rudy Hampton, as well as their assistant principal, Ms. Kim Head, if you would please come forward so we can recognize all of you for this very prestigious award. Do we have other Forsyth Central employees here? Wave at us if we do. We thank you for your support, certainly appreciate them. We refer to Ms. Head, the assistant principal, as the STEM Queens also, so. She is the assistant principal, but she's the STEM Queen as well. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Valerie Bowers. She is our food and nutrition director, to come forward to present our Golden Plate Awards.
It's my pleasure to present to you this year's School Nutrition Gold Plate Award winners. These schools have done a wonderful job of providing excellent customer service to their students and staff, as well as implementing some fun and creative ways to engage our students in our program. Examples of including students are teaching math to students by using recipes and measurements, starting a student nutrition advisory council, finding ways to provide nutrition education to students as they wait in the serving line, participating in school dress-up days and other school celebrations, and speaking to health classes about wellness and healthy eating. The managers at these schools have done an exceptional job of leading their staffs through other, through another successful year of providing healthy, appealing, and great tasting meals. And as the backbone of our program, each staff member has gone that extra mile to be a part of a productive and effective team. As I call the schools' name, will the manager please come forward and receive the award? And will the staff present, please stand so we can acknowledge you? First, we have Dave's Creek Elementary. April Cox is the manager there. And if you're here in support of the cafeteria staff at Dave's Creek, will you please stand so we can thank you for your support? Lakeside Middle School, the cafeteria manager there is Kathy Mueller, and I know she's not with us today, so can I get a representative to come up? And will the staff please stand? And if you're here in support of the cafeteria staff at Lakeside, will you stand so we can thank you? Piney Grove Middle School. Shannon Hardeman is the manager. And did the staff at Piney Grove stand, please? And if you're here in support of the cafeteria staff from Piney Grove, will you please stand so we can thank you? Riverwatch Middle School, Cheryl Burgett, manager. And if her staff will stand? And if you're here in support of the cafeteria staff at Riverwatch, will you please stand so we can thank you? Thank you. Settles Bridge, Tammy Mathis is the manager. Will her staff please stand? And if you're here in support of Settles Bridge, will you please stand so we can thank you? And last but not least, we have Sharon Elementary. Dee Mathis is the manager. Will her staff please stand? And those here in support of Sharon Elementary, will you please stand? And I just wanted to make a quick note that, as you noticed, somebody from the administrative staff, mostly principals, were here today and assistant principals to support the cafeteria, and that means the world to us. So thank you so much for being here and supporting us.
Thank you very much. Our next award is the Reach Employee of the Month Award. This is also a very special award. We'd like to thank Jim and Nick for supporting our Reach Employee of the Month Award each month, and Deidra, I think, is coming forward to help us to present this award. The Reach employee had numerous nominations. We would be here for a long time if I were to read all of them. So however, but I would like to read a couple of things that this employee, their fellow workers had to, and staff members had to say about them. Even on the toughest of days, she always has a positive attitude. She is able to multitask and help multiple people at a time. Her smile always makes you feel welcome. She has been a complete delight to work with since she joined the Raider family. She is always thinking ahead and does what she can to accommodate the needs and wishes of all the folks in our building. She always has a smile on her face and even sends out a daily funny to start our day. That's important. She exemplifies dedication, service professionalism, and courtesy. As a new employee in the Forsyth County school system and at North Forsyth High School, she has made me feel welcomed and comfortable. She always has the answers and is willing to help in any given situation. She sets a high standard and leads by example. She truly is a pleasure to work with, and I know she will continue to bless our workplace with her can-do attitude as well as her bright smile. She always goes above and beyond to help students, parents, and staff. She's always helpful and knowledgeable and can be counted on to do all tasks in an efficient manner. She is hardworking, dedicated. She is always working to help teachers cover classes when we're sick and organizes our parent newsletter. She helps Dr. Abear and, and has a lot of responsibilities that she does well with no complaints. At this time, it is our pleasure to introduce this month's Reach employee, Ms. Karen Carr, secretary at North Forsyth High School. And I know she has family members here. If you're, if you're a family member of Mrs. Carr, would you stand so we can say thank you for supporting her? And if you're here from North Forsyth High, High School to support Mrs. Carr, would you please stand so we can say thank you? Thank you very much. We have one additional recognition, or it's our Superior Performance Spotlight, so the board will move back to their seats, and I'd like to ask Susan Adkins. I think she's going to introduce.
Thank you very much. We have a strong team of social workers in our district, and all of them are professional and observant and care for the needs of their students. Two of them in particular identified a need and have created a program with the help of community colleagues, and they are here to share that with you. Amy Gomez and Jennifer Cumnick, two of our social workers.
Thank you to the board members for allowing us to come and share our project with you today. I'm Jennifer Cumnick, one of the school social workers.
And I'm Amy Gomez, I'm another school social worker.
And our mission as school social workers is to advocate within the home, school, and community in ways that empower and support all students to achieve educational success. And one of the ways that we get to do this is by spending time out in the community and in our students' homes. We have a lot of conversations with parents, and we're building relationships, and a lot of those conversations revolve around identifying barriers to a successful education. And so we will then link the parents and the families to resources to help address those barriers.
Last school year, Jennifer and I began talking about ways that we really want to strengthen that relationship between schools and the community. And just get our schools involved in that. And like Jennifer said, as school social workers, we're out in the community on a daily basis, and we're out in the homes, and we're seeing students, and we're meeting with parents. And a lot of times when we're out doing that, students get excited to see us, and a lot of times we get, you know, "Do you know my teacher?" You know, they get very excited about wanting to connect with the school. So we came up with the idea of what's called Project Connect. And basically, it's having two, teachers and staff go out into the community during pre-planning to students' homes and greet them and get them excited about the new school year. And, and basically, taking out basic supplies was our plan. But thanks to a generous donation from Brownsbridge Church, we were able to provide over three hundred backpacks full of school supplies to students. We had four schools that participated this year: Whitlow Elementary, Coming Elementary, Awwell Middle School, and Forsyth Central High School. Over the course of a few days during pre-planning, we were able to have a hundred and forty-six teachers deliver three hundred and four backpacks to a hundred and eighty-four homes. It was a wonderful experience for both teachers and students.
And so we did a survey afterwards with the teachers to get some feedback on how they, how they experienced this, and we're going to share some of those quotes with you and go through a slideshow.
And this picture that you see right here is the group of Forsyth Central High School teachers that had gone out.
Awesome experience. I will volunteer to do it every year. It's a win-win for all involved and a wonderful bonding experience with coworkers.
They were so thankful. The mother cried and kissed my cheek, saying she wasn't sure how she was going to pay for their supplies.
This was a great community outreach project. I enjoyed it, and the kids were happy, and parents were appreciative. I loved it and would do it again.
The experience was one of the most enjoyable extra activities we've done. I feel like interacting, sorry, with the community. Feel like interacting with the community surrounding our school is important. Parents need to see the teachers and the school's generosity of time.
I spoke with the grandmother of one of our students, who was delighted that we were delivering such needed items and encouraging students to have a great school year.
The families were so grateful. At one house we went to, the mother opened the door to us, and the child to whom we were bringing a backpack was kneeling in front of his couch, working on schoolwork that he had brought home from the previous school year.
It was wonderful to see the happiness and relief in some cases on the faces of these people in our community. But even more powerful than that was the little boy running ahead of us to tell the other families in the community that we were coming. There was genuine excitement about this project. It showed that we are interested in our students and the families as people, not only their academics.
I had a Spanish-speaking teacher with me. He explained to the young father and his mother that we were giving his two sons school supplies and a backpack. When they finished, the young father took my hand and with tears in his eyes said, "Thank you, thank you. This makes me feel good in my heart. Thank you so much." I did not expect such genuine gratitude. And we wouldn't have been able to do this project without the support and help from our administration and just their excitement about getting the teachers involved and out there. And so we really do appreciate them. And I know Mr. Hampton's here. I don't mean to put him on the spot, but I was going to ask if he would talk a minute about his thoughts about the experience.
She gave me five minutes. I mean, these ladies did a marvelous job with this. And when Amy and I first started talking, I didn't really know exactly how the faculty would react to it. And if you've never worked in a high school, I feel funny with my background. If you've never worked in a high school, high school teachers sometimes are a little different. Sometimes they'll be chosen frozen or whatever it may be, but the staff was just, just remarkable. And the experience that they had, we collected all the backpacks at the school and we walked up the street, and it just was something that, that was remarkable, bringing the staff together. And it's something that they're already talking about and wanting to do next year and expand it. It has helped us as far as our Thanksgiving and Christmas programs that we're doing to help families, not only at Central, but, but throughout the, the community. And it's just something that's pretty neat. When you look at the kids and the faces and the adults, you know, when Mom and Dad are there and when the dads cry, you know, that, that's something that's pretty, pretty special. But it was great. Fabulous experience. Now, I have to say, these ladies did all the work. All we did, all we did was pick them up and walk, and they organized everything, they put it all together. So next year, we hope it will be even bigger. We can get to even more families, because I know we missed some, but it was marvelous.
Great job. I'd just like to say, one thing, I always have something to say, but just the years that I, my kids are all out of school, but just the years of being on the board, every year you see the importance of counselors in our schools, and it's just gotten to be such a key part of keeping the atmosphere in the schools headed in the right direction. And I, I can't tell you how much I want to thank, and see the ones who are in the way, thank you for what you do to, to, for our students, but also for the school community. It's just invaluable, totally invaluable.
And there's so many of those things going on all around us. That's why we put this on our agenda, because we don't get out in schools a lot, because we, we all have jobs or working and doing different things. So for us to get to see some of the programs, sometimes after the fact, I'm like, "I wish I knew about that." So I could, we could participate as well. So, you know, we like seeing the programs here, and that's why we brought it up here, so we can see the excellence. Let us know.
United Way also did a lot of collections, and I, I was in that warehouse too, where they all set up the, so it's, this community is one of the most giving places ever. It's just wonderful.
Yeah, let us know next year. At, at this time, we would love for all, everybody to stay for the rest of our meeting, if you want to, but we'll take a couple minutes recess, and if you need to slip out, you're welcome to go before we get into the business end of our meeting. Okay, if we can come back to order. Next item is we have a consent agenda that I hope everybody's reviewed. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Tom, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, and next we have public participation. We do have a couple of people that are signed up, and I'd like to just read the rules. The board welcomes and encourages citizens to attend its meetings, to understand the role of the board and the operations of the Forsyth County school system, and to speak on educational issues and concerns. To guarantee an orderly meeting and to ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak during public participation, the board has the following procedures. The board may limit the time allocated for public participation, as well as the length of individual comments at their discretion. Where appropriate, the public is urged to follow the school system's issues resolution process before presenting issues or concerns to the board through public participation. Only Forsyth County residents, representatives of businesses or organizations or school system employees may address the board during public participation. No individual or group will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking during public participation. The board requests that multiple speakers from a group or organization appoint a single representative to address the board. All speakers shall address the board by first stating their names. All remarks shall be made to the board as a body and addressed through the chair. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual board members. Speakers may bring printed material and other supporting materials. These materials should be given to the clerk of the board. Personnel issues involving individual employees, issue involving individual students, impending litigation are not subjects for public participation. Speakers are asked to keep their remarks civil. Profane, rude remarks and personal attacks will not be allowed. The board will not respond to comments made by the speaker during public participation unless they choose to ask questions. Speakers should remain at the microphone while answering questions. The chairman of the board is responsible for enforcing this policy, and the speakers who are found in violation will have their allotted speaking time immediately concluded. By reading and acknowledging acceptance prior to speaking during public participation, speakers attest that they understand and will abide by this policy. Failure to abide by this policy may result in forfeiture of the right to participate in future board meetings. We don't, this sounds really formal, but we really don't have a timer or anything. We just ask that nobody filibusters. But we do want to hear what you have to say, so it's not going to be, "We don't have our timer out," or anything like that. The first person I have signed up is Sean Harrington. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm actually here to talk about the redistricting that was going on. And, you know, first, you know, we definitely, I live in the Northern Oaks subdivision, and we're part of the Dave's Creek Elementary School, and we're, as a whole, we're so proud of them. We just have, just have to reach out and say, we're just proud, proud of Eric and all the, you know, staff, the teachers, and our students. We, they did a fantastic job, and we, as a community, we feel like we're really a big part of that, you know, the blue ribbon itself. And as a subdivision, not just us, but Sharon Walk, Ivy Falls, we're actually, we're the whole community that actually kind of, we feel like we built Dave's Creek. We, our subdivision's about twenty years old, and, you know, we were there when Dave's Creek opened. And we have a lot of, a lot of the same families actually live in the neighborhoods, and a lot of the families that still go to Dave's Creek today, you know, have ten, a decade or more time built into the school. And now with the redistricting, we kind of feel very sad. We know Sharon's a terrific elementary school, we do. But we feel very sad that the redistricting may not allow us to go to Dave's Creek anymore. So with such a history, we do ask the board that they maybe reconsider redistricting to a different area of the map to Sharon Elementary School. And we were proposing that maybe they consider East James Creek, if you will, for the redistricting. They don't, they, they're, they're a newer community. They've only been, I think, about three, maybe five years. They don't really have the foundation that, at the time, built in as our areas do. And we don't, we feel like that maybe their subdivisions won't be as affected, and the children may not be as affected, and families may not be as affected, as you will affect us by removing Dave's Creek as our elementary school. We do feel like it's part of us, a part of a small-town community. You know, James Creek, I mean, it's, it's still building. East James Creek is still building. There's townhomes still popping up, so we also feel like Sharon Elementary School is going to be better suited for that growing community. And, you know, Wyndhamir Parkway is a four-lane road, a little bit easier maybe to navigate to Sharon Elementary than our little two-lane side of Old Atlanta Road. So that being said, we just ask that y'all maybe just reconsider the redistricting lines and let us remain at Dave's Creek. We do love it there. We think they're great.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? I don't, I think I'm in.
We did spend some time, I, I drive around a lot, but some of our other board members spent some time driving down there today. Collected it all, so we do appreciate that. We're going to talk more about that later, I think, as well.
And we really, I mean, we know it's a very, very hard decision, and we do, I mean, we're very empathetic towards y'all, because I know, no matter what, I mean, somebody's going to feel lost, and we don't, obviously don't want us to be us, but we do want y'all to understand that we really feel like, you know, it's our home and it's part of our hearts, and, you know, especially some of the families that have just been there. And, you know, especially some of the families that have just been there so long. It's a little bit different when you're an older, established community, I think, than when you're brand-new and one of the mega communities. So, but thank y'all for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. And next, we have Chip Van Alstein, Alstein. He can tell me when he gets here.
Chip Van Alstein. Nobody gets it right this time. I also live in Northern Oaks. Also wanted to talk to you about the redistricting. You know, some of the things, in addition, obviously, to our love of Dave's Creek and our pride in the Blue Ribbon Schools and apparently the lunch ladies who are.
They're awesome.
Lots of great awards today for them. But, you know, some of the other things that concern me as a parent, looking at kind of the new situation of moving to Sharon as opposed to Dave's Creek, is kind of the traffic situation. Now, I don't know if any of you have traveled from Northern Oaks to Sharon in the morning. For example, Old Atlanta Road south of Sharon gets very backed up. So, it's a very heavily congested area, whereas going to Dave's Creek from our subdivision is a very short commute. You know, it's five minutes to get our kids to school or five minutes on the bus, a couple of right turns instead of a whole bunch of left turns through some very busy roads. So, that's one thing that's a concern. And much like Sean was saying a minute ago, we've had all of our kids grow up there. My daughter graduated fifth grade last year, got to do her fifth-grade walk through all the schools. My son's a fourth grader there now. My youngest one is looking forward to seeing her big sister's teachers as she moves through the Dave's Creek School from kindergarten up. So, you know, all those things would kind of go away next year if we transfer over to Sharon. Obviously, that's true for anybody. It's gonna be redistricted, but nonetheless, one of the things that concerns me as a parent as well. So, those are kind of some of my concerns from that same perspective, in addition, of course, to all the brilliant things Sean said in that point as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody questions? No, that's okay. We really do appreciate, appreciate parents that care about their kids, and it is a hard thing to do. And, you know, I just want you to know, I think we all do, that we try to take everything into consideration. We try to think about all the kids in the county and do what's best, but we're hearing you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have presentation and discussion items. First is the Aspiring Leaders Program with Mr. Joey Perkel.
Afternoon. I get to talk about something other than the calendar and redistricting. You all didn't know that I could do anything other than.
We didn't know anything else.
But I'll tell you, everything that comes out of this program is just excellent.
I would like to present to you our Aspiring Leaders Program. It's really, I guess I should say, the all-new and improved Aspiring Leaders Program. You know, we talk about, and we've had discussion a lot of times about the thing that makes the most difference for our students and student achievement, of course, as we all know, and that's the teacher in the classroom. But the second thing, and it has the greatest impact on students and their achievement, is the leader or the leaders in those school buildings. And we realize that, and we really have worked hard, I think, over the years to really develop leaders within our own system and to grow our own leaders and to develop those folks who, when they come to us. But we really, last January, we started talking about looking at kind of where we are and realized that, you know, we really need to move this Aspiring Leaders Program up to the next level. So, knowing that I could not do that all alone and do that by myself, I selected a design team, and those folks are, some of those folks, if not all of them, are here. If you would, if you were on the design team, would you stand up? Cheryl Riddle, Connie Stovall. Also, we partnered with GLISI, which is the Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement. Most of you, if not all of you, probably are familiar with GLISI and some things that that organization has done over the years, some really great things regarding leadership. Jam Monroe, Jeff Chaney, myself, Lindsay, Michelle Turner, Mitch Young, Paige Arnett, and Tracy Smith. It was a great group. I will tell you, it was, there were a lot of meetings. Sometimes it was like kind of trying to herd cats, so to speak. We had a lot of discussion about a lot of things regarding leadership, which was good. The purpose was for, again, is for Forsyth County Schools Aspiring Leaders Program is designed to support the aspiring leader in understanding how a strong sense of our core essence of leadership, along with her professional skills and competencies, help to shape the effectiveness of the leader. That's the overall purpose. We had a lot of discussion about the, what we in Forsyth County, what we believe are the core essence of, what do we think the core essence of leadership is in Forsyth County? What does that look like? And we came out with that we, that leadership in Forsyth County fosters relationships and collaboration. We possess integrity. Leaders communicate courageously. They care. They embrace change, and they lead with intentionality. This program, there is an application process for folks who wish to go through the Aspiring Leaders Program. There's, they have to complete an application. There are written responses with three writing prompts that we will ask them to do. There's an administrator recommendation form. There are rubrics that this committee has developed to look at when they're looking at the written prompts and also the administrator recommendation form. There's an interview, a live interview for each candidate. The interviews will be conducted by a leadership panel and will focus on behavioral interview questions. There, we have also developed rubrics for all of those interview questions that we will score all of our potential candidates during their interview. The content of the program, once we have selected, the program participants will be required to attend six modules of professional learning. We're looking at anywhere between 25 to 30 hours of professional learning, once they have completed it. And we have based that on Forsyth County Schools Aspiring Leaders Standards and Competencies that I just spoke about. The content standards and competencies, we actually also align these with the new LEAKs, the new Leader Keys. And so, the competencies will be spending time, that they'll go through modules based on instructional leadership, school climate, planning and assessment, organizational management, professionalism, communication and community relations. And again, all of those directly aligned to those Leader Keys with the new leadership, the new leader evaluation instrument. And the role of the administrator is to ensure that there are appropriate resources and time for the program participation, to provide opportunities for practice and growth, and to support the participants through reflective conversations and feedback. And those are the administrators in the building who will have teachers and/or teacher leaders to go through this program. These are the expectations that we have for their administrator as their folks go through the program. And some additional, we have some FAQs developed. I didn't put that. I didn't put the application. All the rubrics, I could have spent a whole lot of time talking to you about that. I can certainly see to it that you get all of that information. But we do have some FAQs, and we will be collecting data to determine the impact of the program as we, as we move through the program with some surveys. And we want to do, spend a lot of time really getting, collecting some data to say, you know, how effective has this program been?
How many people apply? Can anybody apply, or are you recommended?
Well, no, not just anybody can apply. There is, and it's in the information that they'll get, in the criteria, that we, teacher leaders, and we look for folks who have either, they already hold a leadership certificate, they're enrolled in a leadership program, or they can be about to enroll in a leadership program, but we would need to have some information from them and their administrator about that.
How many do you have a year?
We, well, we haven't done it, we haven't not done this program in the last couple of years. But the last year that we did the program, we always typically had, the last few years, we typically had, I'd say, 30, between 30 and 35 folks each time. We could have had more, but we kind of cut it off, and we say that we're not gonna be able to take more than probably 30.
So, you do have to cut it off, though. I mean, you have.
Yes, yes.
So, the professional learning, is it done here in Forsyth County? Do you bring in outside people for some of these modules and different things?
It will be done here in Forsyth County. Actually, folks from GLISI, the Georgia Leadership Institute, will be teaching all of the modules this time. We'll be, we'll certainly be alongside them. And we're looking at and talking at the end of this year, how we want to teach though, and who, how we want to do those and teach those modules, right? Because we can possibly do some of that in-house as well. This first year, they will be doing that. They will actually develop the modules for us, and they'll be teaching the modules, the classes. But they will be in Forsyth, here in Forsyth County. We have the dates scheduled for those already, and the times. Most of them will be, if, well, all of them will be either in an afternoon, 4:30 until 7:30, or it will be on Professional Learning Day, or, and there are two dates in June. And they coincide with the leadership retreat, June the 2nd, 3rd. Because we may do some, we may do some things at that, with them, with this group.
Joey, how many of you had to go through it to this point?
Since I've been in this position, I would say we've had, Lynn, wouldn't you say, we've probably had 200 and 250 participants to go through AA1 and AA2 over the last seven, eight years? I mean, I think, yeah, something like that. That's a guess. Don't hold me to that.
I just know some of the presentations that we've heard before are just really well-done, in-depth, and you could tell they spent a lot of time on them. Impressive.
Alrighty, we'll see you later.
Alright, thank you. Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, next, we have Jennifer Cratchelo with the timeline for naming of the elementary school 14.
Okay. It has been a while since we've named a new school, so I just wanted to come before you just to kind of update you on the process that we use. We are looking for names that have historical significance, and so, we do open it up to the community. And the ways that we'll open it up to the community is that we have a local study group made up for the principal and a PTA or LSC leader from their school will be meeting with myself and Mr. Amerson and a representative from the Historical Society. We'll look at the property and come up with some names. And then also, we'll publicize on our website using our other various communication tools. And the local media will ask for recommendations. And then, once we receive recommendations, Mr. Amerson and myself, with the representative from the Historical Society, will review those names. We will send them to the LSCs from the feeder, which will be Shiloh Point, Midway, and. Thank you. And then, once we receive those, that feedback, we will bring it to the Board of Education. And we will have our new school named before the holiday break. And the reason that we need to do this is because, once the process starts with facilities, it helps them easier with tracking purposes, instead of calling this elementary number 14, which it will really be elementary number 21. Do you have any questions about the process?
So, why is it 14?
I do not know that. Mr. Amerson? Why is it 14?
Why is it 14?
Some from that time, they started really numbering.
Because I started naming them after we ran out of north, New North, New South.
Okay, so we did start with number one.
Right, there was six or seven elementary already. Once we started growing.
Exactly, okay. We all learned something tonight. Alrighty. Oh, you're next, right?
Facilities plan.
Okay.
Okay. This is our last, I wanted to go over meetings from our last committee meeting that we've had. And the things that we talked about were media centers, computer labs, some growth areas, and then, we also discussed CTAE. So, you have these notes. They're posted on our website, too. If you go to forward slash facilities plan, anybody from the community can review these notes. And what we talked about as a district committee were the media centers and computer labs first. And as much as we would love to add more computer labs to the schools, to the existing schools, we know that it will take up two classrooms per, to make one computer lab. And since the majority of our schools are overcrowded, we, as a committee, then recommend that we only add at the middle and the high school level one additional computer lab. And then, also, we talked about, too, that we have the three older middle schools, South, North, and Vickery, that do not have that new middle school design with that extra addition. So, that's one of our recommendations, too, is that we go back and we expand those media centers, bringing them up to the media center standard for the existing media, existing middle schools. And then, Mr. Klingler brought tons of information about the needs of technology. And they actually went out and surveyed to find out how the schools were using their existing technology, because, you know, many of them do have those stationary desktop computers, they have the laptop carts, and then, too, with the use of BYOT. And so, we did talk about what we can do as far as the future for computers. And then, too, Mr. Amerson brought towards, brought to the committee is that, based on some of the enrollment that we're seeing in the southern portion of the county, we discussed whether or not to still do the additions at Riverwatch and North Middle as compared to building a new middle school. And so, this is not the middle school that is going.
South Middle.
South Middle, sorry. This middle school would have been to relieve Riverwatch, South Middle, and Lakeside Middle School as compared to the additions that we talked about at South Middle and Riverwatch. And so, this is not the, this is not the middle school that's next to elementary 14. I just want to make sure that you know, that you're aware of this. This would be another middle school. But we were talking, too, at the same time, about our bond needs, because this committee fell over a lot into the bond committee discussions and with the existing listed projects that we have with that bond referendum. And the committee recommended, because we do not have the land, we do not have the money, and because the cost to build that new middle school would be twice the cost for what it was to do the additions, that we recommended that we just stay with the additions for the facilities plan.
How many, in the two additions, how many students is that gonna add?
Seven out of 25.
So, not quite a full school, but a fair number.
And then, Dr. Hall presented the CTAE Career Academy Plans. And our committee was very excited about this, because it gave us the roadmap for what, you know, what programs they have at the current schools that they're interested in sustaining and also growing, and then, some new additions, too. And so, at Central, they will still have the STEM Academy. And then, they are also recommending some automotive expansion, because that program is very, very popular. At Lambert High School, they will have the Health Science Academy with a classroom lab expansion, and then, also, Finance Academy. North Forsyth High School will have the IT Academy with the physical medicine lab space. And we also talked about optional culinary, because you know how popular that program is. South Forsyth High School would have the Innovation Academy, which you know is part of our partnership with Siemens, with the manufacturing and engineering. And then, also, to build on their strong DECA and culinary programs, to Hospitality and Tourism Academy. And then, at West, they would have the Sports and Entertainment Marketing Academy with the engineering expansion for the classrooms. And then, we also talked to, we came back to you and talked about our first committee meeting. One of the areas we talked about was, do we build a CTAE high school? You know, we talked a lot about our future plans for our CTAE programs. And the committee felt strongly, again, that we do have existing programs at the schools that are very strong, that students can attend out of district, like, such as the ROTC program at North Forsyth High School. And, too, with our renewed partnership with Lanier Technical College, you know, partnering more with them to using their facility. And so, those were our committee meeting notes. Do you have any questions about that?
I think I've got questions on the middle school decision, but I'm not ready to.
Is it, is it just, we are gonna build one middle school, and the second one is the one you're saying to build on to the schools? Is that what?
Yes, ma'am. And that, a lot of that discussion, too, went over into our bond committee meeting, whenever we're looking at the amount of money that we have to do the bond program for the next three years with the list of construction that we already have that's necessitated.
Well, yeah, I think that's a discussion that the Board would like to talk about, is the bond, not just limiting it to what it is.
We know across this over, I don't think we all are concerned. I think Nancy and I, being down in that end of the world, I mean, if you look right now, and I appreciate what you've gone through, we realize we'll get the middle school on the other side, and adding to potentially Riverwatch and South adds 700. But I think, and we're doing this five-year facilities plans, but I think we're all hoping that, in reality, we can't wait another five years again. This is not gonna hold us. I mean, if you look at the zonings that are in the county right now, not including Owens, if you look at just the last 30 days, there are 23 rezoning applications that are for Highway 20 and South. None of them above, they're all Highway 20 and South. 17 of those rezoning applications are for high-density, being either Res 6 or Res 4, which is more than four or six units per acre. So, and those aren't even in the ground yet. So, it's more common. So, I think that we're just, I know the facilities plan is separate, and then, there's also the bond. But I think we're all expecting that this is not gonna be taking, we're gonna be doing more as the years go by.
Well, and we know that the state mandate is the five-year, and we've been doing, what, every three years? Yeah, for our three to four years for our facilities plan. And, too, we're still continuing to, even though our facilities plan committee is done meeting, our bond. our bond committee is just getting started, and so they, we met in October too as well with them. And they came, we had a two-hour meeting with a very, very detailed list, and Mr. Amerson's collected a list of needs too from each individual school. So now we're gonna meet in, again in November, again in December, and then we'll come back to you in January, and that's whenever we can, we can get to more discussion about the projects. But as far as what we earn state money from, this was, you know, this is what we would have recommended.
Okay.
Have experienced with this whole process, it's been very difficult to keep those things as bond projects that we need to address for all the schools equally. Many of them will be things that become part of our facility plan for renovations, modifications, roof, air, air conditioning replacements, we'll earn entitlement for it, but it's not something we'll necessarily create a project we'll request state funding for. Uh, again, most of our focus will remain for new construction, new additions, and those type of projects. Real quickly, I'm gonna go back over a form that looks very familiar with, and scroll down this way, and the key thing that I'll talk about at this point, as I noted first time, now showing that elementary school number fourteen is no longer in this new facility plan. Now that we've made our application, and that the application will be approved, and the funding will be allocated before this plan takes effect, the state will now consider this as seventy-one instructional units available when you see the next plan, so I wanna make you aware, so y'all didn't think I had a typo on it. So that is actually not part of the bond, it's not part of the, this new facility plan.
To carry over.
Yes, yeah, it's, we're finishing up from the previous capital funding projects. Alright, but basically there, again, we've got a projection from the state about twenty-two thousand three hundred seventy-six students that we've all moved and placed in homes of the existing schools, and, uh, started building a few extras to go into a future school right now, move those students to Pull's Mill. As we do the next plan and get ready for that next elementary school, again, we'll be very flexible about identifying where that school site may need to be, uh, may not be Pull's Mill, but at that time we can revise our proposed organization and direct them to a new elementary school.
So if, if the need is still on the south end of the county, that will come before Pull's Mill?
If we find out that we have to build a school somewhere else besides the west side of the county, then we'll certainly go back and revisit where that need is, and we'll build the schools where we need.
Okay.
So we're building up the need numerically.
This, this is just kind of the remainder and a place to put them, as a point to hold them. Uh, and, uh, like I said, we'll have about twenty instructional units to credit as we go towards the next plan, and be building from that point for elementary schools.
Once we hit around seventy, seventy-ish, that's when we're doing other technically? Depending on the size that we need?
Yeah, and again, that's gonna be primarily based on, we'll look for that area where we're, we're trying to relieve, and say, can we go get a third here, a third here, and a third here, and pull them in to make our next elementary school? And the next page is the proposed organization, uh, hold here on the middle school. Uh, again, what we've done is we've distributed eleven thousand four hundred and twenty students to all of our existing middle schools. What we've done is we've increased the capacity for Riverwatch to fourteen hundred, and, uh, South Forsyth Middle School you see is thirteen forty-five, again, that's kind of the balance of the students I had left to move. So you'll see that there's actually, uh, additional students that we'll do with local FTE. That with sixty-five, we'll have to build three more instructional units to build them out to the eighty-six instructional units. So we'll be building all these schools to eighty-six units with a capacity of about fourteen hundred. And then, of course, we'll have new middle school number ten, which is slated to go on James Road, down there near McFarland, Union Hill Road. Again, primarily relieving Vickery Creek, uh, Middle School and, uh, Pine Grove Middle School. And working up our projections as we go out the next five years, you'll see a column called the local FTE. You see, we've identified that our numbers right now indicate we'll be at least three hundred and fifty-five students over that, and that's very early from the first, uh, months, not even first month's attendance, but early attendance report this year.
So the seven-hundred-figure number that you alluded to earlier is what's there at Riverwatch and South?
The growth, how many students extra?
The change from that ten twenty-five number to fourteen hundred and the, yeah.
Right.
That's around seven.
Okay.
And with Otwell, there's a lot of potential growth coming right along there.
Yeah, and you can see that with the balance I have for my local FTE, I moved those to Otwell, so it begins saying locally, and this would not be a state-funded project, cuz we're not earning state FTE for it, but locally we see that there could be a need for expansions in the future with Otwell, uh, that would be a local funding issue, not a state-funded issue, based on this plan. Hopefully in the next three years, as we get these projects rolling, we again, update our plan, and, uh...
We'd get state money then, at that point possibly?
Could be earned by then.
Right.
And it's all, and it's all a question of timing, if, if Otwell can wait for us to get state funding, we'll build it, if not, then we'll have to figure out some other way to take care of Otwell's, uh, needs.
If those, those two developments go in off of, oh, for Highway nine, they're at, at North Old Land, those are two large apartments.
They are.
We just hope they come in as kindergarten, first grade, and give us a few years.
Just have little kids.
We'll request that.
Well, Tammy, we, alright, we're, we've presented, um, the five-year plan to the state now. What's the soonest we can do another plan to present to them, to get approval for funding?
I could do one next year if it's student...
But you're not tied to every five years or every three years, if, if the need...
No, you're tied to every five years, it's required by the state.
To do it.
To do it every five years, we have to present a plan, and of course, our thing is, after we did the five schools we opened in two thousand nine, we satisfied so much of our need that the state was looking at. Uh, and with the way they work their entitlement programs, we had to go back in and say, we're still growing, we need to show them we still have need here, so that's why we chose to go ahead and up the plan a year early.
Right.
So that's what she's saying, you don't have to wait five years, you can do it earlier.
Like with...
And like I said...
You might get a few gray hairs if you keep doing this fast, but we have to, we have to.
Like I said, we have done them in as quick as three years.
Yeah, I know that, I'm just thinking in terms of the, the plan that we're getting now, the schools won't open to twenty sixteen. So by then, I mean, it's almost like we do this, and then we start next year, so that we're not waiting another three years to open any more schools, that we're, we could be opening in twenty seventeen or eighteen without having to wait so long.
And again, as we've talked, even with the question of the bond, we wanna look at those projects, not five years out, we want the things that we really need to have in place and, you know, uh, boots to the ground sort of projects in the next three years, we want them...
Right, right.
Be started that much faster.
Right.
In the bond, do we, do we anticipate, like, say that it's grows so fast and we have to put some money into Otwell? Do we plan that into our bond money, just as a contingency, saying, what if we have to build and we don't have state money? Is that how the bond, how we come up with all the priorities?
Right now, like I said, our priority is to work on that local side of the funding that matches with the state funding for these projects.
But I mean, over and above, over and above that, I mean...
Right now, we're, we've got the focus on the, uh, local funds to marry with the state funds to build middle school number ten, and the same thing, uh, for the additions at Piney, uh, Riverwatch and South.
So I think, is, are you trying to say our ideal list is probably bigger than...
Oh, our, our deal wish list was, yeah, we'll come up short.
Twice as much as what you've got there, I mean, it usually is.
Four times as much.
Four times as much, wow.
But see, like I said, these things we do, put in the local facilities plan to the state, and then they look at that number of dollars needed for Forsyth County to build classrooms, put roofs on, replace air conditioning, those type of projects. And that's what they kind of gauges with, when they compare us to the other hundred eighty systems in the state, saying, this is what Forsyth County needs compared to another county or another school system.
Well, and the challenge we have, we also are no longer getting that exceptional growth, extra money.
Right.
So, we're still getting that growth, if not as much more, and we're not getting that extra punch of cash from the state that we used to get to cover that, so... So locally, we may have to make that...
But that does show up, because we do identify that as the classroom needs, the instructional unit needs in this program, which is a growing system, other school systems may not have, or they have satisfied those. So, they don't have those big-ticket items of needing a brand-new high school on their needs list like we would.
But that chunk of money that was set aside from that, that used to go to those systems like us, is now distributed statewide, so it, we might still get some, but it's not nearly proportional to our growth.
Wish it worked out where we got another third of it, but... And we'll go through the section real quick now with the high schools. Again, the primary project, we've put the bulk of the new students that we're estimating from the state into future high school number seven, that's designed to relieve South Forsyth High School and West Forsyth High School. Meantime, we have some overcrowding issues at Lambert High School, that we plan to make an addition at Lambert and at North Forsyth High School to take care of those immediate population needs we see up there in those areas. Just for the fact, again, we can't support two high schools at one time coming out of the ground and starting two high schools that quickly. The one other part, again, I'll point out here is the local FTE. You'll see I've got a lot larger distribution. Again, our high school population is growing very quickly, we've had that bubble move on up into middle and high school. So as the, the state doesn't necessarily look at that part in their calculations, they take our sixteen hundred and twelve students per year for the next five years, and determine what ratio of that is high school students, based on the current trend. I certainly see that we're gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of about fourteen hundred more high school students than what they were calculating for.
So they're still using that five-year average?
Yes, just taking us out to twenty eighteen, and, uh...
It hurts us. It hurts us the most, cuz we're in the tail end of the slowdown from five years ago, where the numbers were not quite, where they were going down, so we're still averaging, and gonna one more year, I think it is, the lower numbers that are not reality of where we're at now.
It's that two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven dip that we had that kind of brought our state averages down, yes. And it will take several years for that number to roll off.
And we're still gonna keep talking to the state about, we're gonna keep bringing that up every year, about trying to revise that formula for at least those systems who are not normal.
At least, at least take the high and low off and use the middle ones or something.
We're not normal here.
Um, and again, like I said, you know, as I had looked at the growth patterns, uh, coming forward, at a elementary school, last year from the previous year, we only grew one point two percent for elementary school. This year we jumped to two point three, so you can see that that trends for elementary now, starting to pick up with the new developments and the move-ins. Uh, for middle school, we actually dropped from seven point one to four point two percent this year. And again, that's where we saw that sort of bubble start to move towards the high school now, and so now my, uh... Peak, peak at the middle school is now starting to roll towards the high school, it appears. And high school has gone up steadily from three point eight to four point five, to now four point seven percent. So we're seeing it climb year after year. And like I said, just quick estimation, that if we continue our growth pattern, which would be about three point seven percent on average for the next five years, right now we're at four point seven percent, but just looking as we move those numbers out a little bit bigger, uh, there would be about forty-eight thousand students at the end of this program. So there'd be about eight thousand more than where we're at today.
In five years?
In five-year program. Okay. So that's kind of the, the news on where our numbers are coming to what our building program is for this local facility plan. So again, once we start these projects, and they're funded, and they kind of roll off, again, we'll see the need to start building a new facility plan, to go back and ask for additional, uh, help from the state, cuz each year as we open new schools and then, and they're funded, that need value comes off of our entitlement sheets, so our, our comparison to all the other systems starts to be a little bit smaller, year after year from that point. We will certainly keep our administrative updates running with them.
Is this an administrative decision, it's not legislated, is it?
The average, the five-year average?
Is it?
It's in the code, Mike told me, I didn't know what that meant.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's the rules that the state has done for capital outlay. I mean, I've, I've read it in the section one twenty, uh, section, about how capital outlay is, is funded and how everything's determined, so it is written into the state code.
I just wondered if it was a legislative thing.
That's what he said, it was in the code.
So he couldn't, they couldn't pass legislation.
He said the hard thing is, since they just had changed the exceptional growth this past session, that trying to go in there and do something that's exactly opposite of that, politically would be difficult to do right now. If it was like three or four years ago, I said it would be harder, but it was just last session.
Okay.
And again, real quickly, this is tabulation priorities, uh, we've taken elementary fourteen, it's now come off. I've actually moved it to the bottom, cuz I wanna keep count my ninety million dollars, uh, from the state against my running total I have for state entitlement, we're estimating. Uh, so that's now moved future middle school number ten to the top of my list. Uh, we have North Forsyth High School addition, Lambert High School addition, Riverwatch School addition, future high school, and the South Middle additions. And the reason we have moved that high school, uh, number seven kind of down, we do have that planning period of identifying property, procuring property, getting it approved, and developing the school, uh, design for that project. So it'll be a little bit slower coming out of the gates than some of the other projects where we have land, and have a pretty good prototypical di- design, would, not that we're necessarily use the exact school design, but our programming for that's pretty clear.
So this number's not the total, if, for example, future school number seven, that's, that's not the total cost, that's just what the state would put towards the project.
Yeah, this is just the state part.
Small portion of it.
Very small portion.
Like I said, based on a hundred and seven units at X number, uh...
Per square foot.
I think it's eighty-four dollars per square foot, and they use a factor of like twenty-four hundred square feet per instructional unit, uh, cuz that twenty-four hundred includes a seven hundred square foot classroom, plus a little hallway, plus a little cafeteria, plus a little media center, um, all the way down the line. So, but it will be a, uh, big application to submit to them.
And in your spare time of building this growth, kind of be innovative a little bit, and think outside the box, that, you know, we have our school, and we know the rigor we have to go through to get the land okayed by the state, we have certain requirements, and in our county, it's real hard to buy that too, so we know the land bank is something we always talk about, making sure we're looking far enough ahead to make sure we have that property right, and that, that has to be fed into the bond referendums and things that we do. But think innovatively too about, you know, I, I tell people, we heard the superintendent from Joplin, Missouri, who lost his whole school system in May, and had to reopen in August, and how he recovered from a, a F-five tornado that just took out the whole town, as well as the system. You know, they did some innovative things to kind of open school back up, and I'm wondering if, short-term, for our growth situation, maybe there's some things like that we can do, so be innovative, and if you come up with some things and it wouldn't fit in that hole that the state has defined as what we think schools should be in Georgia, let us know that, and let us have some discussions with DOE and state to see if there's some options maybe that we're not looking at.
And, you know, after fifteen years, I pretty much understand what to look forward to with the state reviews and all that as we, we go through that, uh, so trying to think ahead, um, you know, we certainly have multiple locations for high school number seven, uh, that we've copied, we got some data on it.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to start talking about buying a school before you have any money in your bank.
Not for us, we've been there many times.
So, but like to start those conversations as we move forward and...
And look at any hindrances that we go through, bureaucracy that keeps us from building it like we need to. I know the, the growth fund was a great thing to have, and we kind of kept speaking up about that, so let us know, because we work with the legislator, trying to say, hey, how about you give us some flexibility in this area? Let us look at what we're building, how we're building it, and if it doesn't fit in that square peg, you know, in that round hole that we build every time, let us know about that, so maybe we can look at changing some things.
As we've already approached discussion, one of the things we have to do with each of our schools, uh, these will be revised even for our existing schools, as we talk about the new CTAE programs that we're gonna incorporate at those schools.
Especially those.
We will be addressing that, as we've done our current inventory, we'll go back in there and say, as we're doing the, the addition at North Forsyth High School, these are facilities we're looking at to support that new program that we're looking at there, uh, be it ROTC or, uh, there are the engineering programs.
And CTAE is a perfect example of how we might have to do it a little different, cuz they need a different kind of space, we keep talking about, we've redefined what that classroom looks like, well, let's redefine it.
And as we've had discussions, you know, setting the precedent, or I'm trying to think of the other word, parity of the schools is one of the things that we always come up against challenge of what schools have compared to the other schools and what they need. And again, I think the, uh, expectations of what sort of program environments we're creating, because we are fastly improving... because we are vastly improving what a technology lab used to be to what they are now. So we are uh-
Okay.
Trying to step up on those points. All right. Uh, anyway, I've covered very basically the same school construction areas of the additions and the uh new school construction. And then you see the rest away on your list, these are schools that will be earning uh entitlement for roofs, HVAC, all those good renovations and updates. You'll see a few of them, like North Forsyth Middle, uh, we did have a bond, I mean, a state participation in ninety-nine when we did twelve classroom additions at all the middle schools. So the original building, which was built back in ninety-six, we actually can earn money for the original school for its updates, renovations. Uh, I won't be able to apply for anything that goes into those buildings that are the wing additions. And so you see that where I note little things about original uh is the core part of the building. Uh, some of the areas we've uh had other work done, so we can only do HVAC in the kitchen, which is a much shorter time period as far as uh the period when the state looks at when they funded it to being able to uh do those sort of renovations. But like Dave's Creek at the bottom of the, the page was originally funded back in uh ninety-five. Clock starts at ninety-six, so we can actually start going back to the original building, Dave's Creek. If it was done before ninety-six, it's kind of our time window they look at. And then moving through to the next page, and there's the rest of the schools that we talked about. Um, again, you see Sonny Primary School, uh, we can do renovations in that building, but the Sonny Elementary uh that we replaced was funded by the state, so it cannot be part of my renovations modification. Anyway, um, you see at the very bottom too, I've, I've put elementary school, so I keep the nine point five million dollars tracking. We're looking at a project in the next couple of years for applications totaling about fifty million dollars, of which right now we have about fifty-nine million dollars that we've identified to be available with this year's entitlement being in place. And again, we will earn more entitlement next June and following years through that. So that number will keep bumping up uh several million dollars as we earn entitlement. We hope, you know, to earn more than what we did this last year because we'll have a new plan, we'll have a lot new, a lot more new needs identified in that plan as we go forward. Any other questions there?
There's a lot to think about.
Thank you, Tim.
Any more questions?
You need the money man.
Dan's gonna solve all our problems.
And here is the money man, Mr. Dan Jones with our finance report for the month.
Cheer us up a little bit, Dan, would you?
Okay, this is for the month ended September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. And we started the month off with twenty-six million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand. Our revenues for the month were twenty-four million, three seventy-two. And I'll show you where that came from here in a minute. Uh, our expenditures for the month were accounts payable was twelve point nine million and payroll a little over eleven million, total of twenty-four million. And the balance at the end of the month was twenty-six million, seven twenty-five. So this is one of the months, if you look back at the top, that we actually ended better than we started with. And the good reason is because tax money has started coming in. And this is, uh, for the first time in a few months, we are uh four million dollars better off than we were this time last year.
That's encouraging.
Yes, glad to see that. Uh, budget revenues were almost eighteen percent and overall on expense were just a little over, almost twenty-six percent. So everything's right in line with where we need to be. And you can see that we collected thirteen million dollars in tax revenue at form taxes. So that's a pretty good start considering they're not due till next month. Uh, so that's uh ten percent of our revenue, so we've still got good ways to go, but that should catch up. By December, you'll see a, a big increase in that. But you can scroll through each department area and everybody is right now in line with where we should be. Everything's looking good on the expenditure side. And again, the list of all the checks and we can get you information that you need on that. Schools, uh, we have a reporting this month from all the schools. And you can see the elementary's got one point seven million total. Middle is a little over a million and the high schools are two point eight million for a total of five billion, six sixty-eight in all the school accounts. Sales tax, uh, sales tax was a little better this month, two million, six fifteen. We're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than last month, or six percent. But we're down a little bit from the same time last year. And that seems to be the trend over the last four or five months is we're not collecting what we did the same time last year. And we thought last year was, you know, not so good, so I hope that will pick up as uh we get closer to the holiday season here.
Probably has something to do with what's going on nationally.
Oh, yes.
And healthcare.
This money is invested, we earned eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars in interest. And there's currently eleven million, fifty-six thousand uh available to make debt service payments. This is what it looks like, if you put it on a graph, you see a little uptick here. We've been kind of flat, so glad to see that. The two thousand and seven bond money, uh, we earned six hundred and eighty-seven dollars in interest and there's seven, almost seven point three million. And the oh five, what's left there, we earned three hundred dollars in interest and there's about three point two million. And I'll show you where that money is, what it's uh- Being reserved for right here. This is capital outlay. Now you see the oh five and the oh seven. And uh what we've done is come in and uh put the reserve for elementary fourteen because we're making application to the state for that money that Tim just talked about. And we've got to have local money to match that, so this is where it's coming from. You can see that uh it, over here on the end, we don't have any capital outlay money available for anything because we've got this reserved uh for elementary school number fourteen. And what's the balance in five is to offset the deficit that you see here in the local side. So uh, there's almost eight million dollars that we have available in local match for elementary number fourteen. And debt service, you saw the eleven million in the splosh accounts, there's seven point three million in our checking account. So we've got eighteen million available for future bond payments. And what we've got coming up for bond payments, in December, I've got about one point four million. In January, there's a little over half a million. And then in February, uh, we've got fourteen million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar payment. Now ten point five million will come out of the debt service side and three point eight will come out of sales tax.
This is when the, the big payments are gonna start hitting us, right?
Yes.
In the next two years?
Yeah, it's usually a couple of years, though it'll be in June.
Right.
One of our bigger payments, so they're spaced out. But uh, as we get into talking about the bond, we've got to keep in mind that when this sales tax is finished, we will have paid off about half of our debt that's outstanding.
Right.
So uh, and we'll be bringing you some numbers that show you what that does to everything as we get on into it. But that's the financial report, any questions I could answer?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and next is Action Adams and it's Mr. Perkel with the district lines draft two.
Thank you. Just to kind of summarize or recap, I guess, last week at the, um, at your work session, we um, as a committee, presented the, our recommendations based on the feedback for draft one. And those recommendations, we had two recommendations to um, in the creation of draft two uh from draft one based on the feedback from the committee. And that was to move section, the section from Sharon Elementary to Johns Creek back to Sharon Elementary, the, the, the section that we had moved from Sharon to Johns Creek, we moved that back. And then move East Ridge at Stony Point with the other part of the ridge and all of those to go to Big Creek, which uh moved approximately forty students uh to Big Creek and reduced Shala Point forty students. Those are the two recommendations. You all had lengthy discussion about the feedback and went through all of the feedback and had some discussion about all of those points. You had uh five areas that you asked us to give you some clarification on. Um, you did not have any recommendations for us to move anything uh to the creation of draft two. But we did uh provide you feedback on those five things that you asked for. One of those being um, the Shepherd's Pond, the community, uh, the committee recommended to keep uh those um, these forty elementary school students moved to Shala Point from Midway because Midway needed the available space and it would uh help them to be able to continue to grow until fourteen was built. So we, we clarified that, we as a committee said we, we didn't make any recommendations based on that. Um, and the second one was the, the comment from Westgate at Shabburn asking to be moved. And uh, so this is the northern section of Shabburn and the entire subdivision had a hundred and fourteen students. The committee recommended for them to remain at Midway with no change. And the third area was the future development around Johns Creek. And you asked us just to check to make sure, uh, because we talked about the reason that we, that we, as a committee recommended we move them was because of the uh areas that we, when we went back and looked at it, the areas that we uh felt that would be developed in that area. And so we, you asked us to verify that and we did that. The fourth area was a breakdown of Windermere and um, the, the elementary schools that they feed being Hall Creek and Dave's Creek. And um, so we sent you that information. And then the fifth one was the area of future development around Summerwind. And we had looked into that area around that, um, around Summerwind, that they have the potential for future development. And we confirmed the attendance lines, uh, and the area says will either be a Sharon Lambert feed or um Settles Bridge Riverwatch Middle School feed. That was the, I think, a clarification thing that you all had asked for.
And it's what's right at Summerwind and up for the Settles Bridge?
That was correct, yes. Yes, that's correct. So those are the areas that you asked for clarification for. So we made the two uh changes based on the recommendation that we mentioned last week at the work session. So I would ask the superintendent to um make a recommendation that we approve draft two based on those two recommendations that the committee talked about and presented last week at your work session.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education approve district, district lines draft number two. This draft will go online for public feedback and as you know, uh, there are two scheduled public forums that will be taking place next week, Tuesday evening for elementary and uh Thursday evening for secondary schools to give parents an opportunity to divorce their concerns and suggestions on draft two. So that is the recommendation.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
It's our move.
It's okay.
A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy, okay, discussion.
Yeah, I think we do. And uh, first I wanted to say to the staff that we have had lots of questions throughout this process. A lot of very data-driven questions and you all have been very helpful in answering our very detailed and very specific questions. And uh, it's not usually yes or no or just a number because it gets, if you do this, it does that and it changes this feeder pattern and that. So I really appreciate all your time and, and you guys are not nine to fivers because last night when I was supposed to be cooking dinner at five-thirty, I was on the phone with Mr. Emerson going over aerial maps of different areas and what was being built, so we appreciate all that time and effort. I think there was one area that we had, um, we had talked about before, but came up a little bit more this week. And we have had some emails and some numbers of back and forth and it got a little, it was so complicated that I just kind of wanted to step through that one a little bit more and that was the area along Old Atlanta, the Dave's Creek shift. And with the older subject is what we called the Sharon Walk area versus the newer area along the opposite side of the East James Creek. So um, the requests that originally come in from those in the, I'll say the Sharon Walk area, that they wanted to remain having been there longer. And initially, the first question was, well, how would that compare to say keeping what we're now referring to as East Johns Creek? And the quick answer we got was, yeah, sorry, James Creek, the numbers were significantly different. I believe it was around three hundred elementary students in the whole, whole James Creek subdivision versus around, I want to say a hundred and fifty-ish in the-
I think it was a hundred and, do you rem, I don't remember the number of-
It roughly, but so initially we're like, okay, that didn't, didn't work. But then when we looked at it more, we kind of stepped back a little bit and said, well, that was the one option that was presented to us, but you know, was there anything more we could think outside the box? And having driven it and looked around, we looked at other areas of just a partial area of keeping in Dave's Creek, not shifting all of those Old Atlanta Street and possibly looking at splitting the James Creek subdivision such it is such a large subdivision like Windermere. It's, it was developed on two different sides of the street, it's so large. So we, we were just, we walked through some of that and Mr. Emerson was kind to kind of bullet point a, a list. I just kind of want, I got through, I got through those all and, but I'm not sure if those who are not as familiar with the area. So I just wanted to walk through that a little bit if we could and whether Mr. Perkel, you want to do that or if you want to put Mr., wherever you want to walk through that with us, whatever you think is best.
Well, I'm gonna, will, if, will Tim can come up and if we have questions that I can answer, certainly then he can answer a few.
So, just to throw the concept out there and you had, you had obviously looked at it into great detail for us and I appreciate that. We had run some numbers as far as the distances between the different subdivisions on the western side of that triangle versus the eastern side. You, you want to walk through a little bit with us and talk about the positives and the negatives? We talked about, one of the things I had missed in that initial concept was the feeder pattern. And that was at the middle school level and that was the one concept that kind of threw us.
And again, part of the uh original thought was that you would leave and look at moving this area of East James Creek, as we've come to know now, as part of that area that's Windermere going to Hall Creek.
Right.
Which would be a large travel distance. And again, like I said, that would require that subdivision to pass through some areas that are fed by Brandon Hall and some of the other Windermere subdivisions to stay in Dave's Creek. So you would in fact have this little pocket going through some areas that were uh-
Here.
Windermere, Dave's Creek, Brandon Hall, Dave's Creek.
And also South Middle for that matter? Like the Brandon's?
Well, Brandon Hall was going to move only at middle school level and South Middle to Lakeside in our draft, draft number two plan. So Brandon Hall moves, would promote from Dave's Creek to Lakeside in the new draft.
Okay.
But like I said, Brandon Hall would still be at Dave's Creek, so you'd actually be moving this subdivision past Brandon Hall's access point to Dave's Creek all further up to Hall Creek, so that's-
So they'd be crossing.
Yeah, you had them crisscrossing as they went back and forth. And that was what I was trying to point out in that first comment there.
Okay, all right. I'm just gonna, gonna go through these. You ran the, I love GIS, but it was in, it was three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five feet for study area three twenty-five, four C and seven thousand two hundred, I needed miles, so I, I drove it. Anna, I don't have my email, I sent, but it varied from point seven miles from the intersection of Windermere and Melody Mizer going on to Dave's Creek, so you're James Creek West versus if you come over some, say, Northern Oaks or Ivy Falls, it was as much as I want to say one point seven from my memory and down from that point, so as you get closer, it was less. So the distance is a little more, but they are doing the right turns from Ivy Falls and Northern Oaks, right turns it on, so it's still not much distance either way. I mean, under a mile or miles.
Yeah, like I said, first, first, we had, I think, on my calculation was nine thousand feet and the shortest distance is thirty-eight hundred feet, so you know, one, one was one-third the distance compared to the uh, I don't remember which one I had, the furthest, Northern Oaks being the furthest middle school out of those four pockets we were looking at.
And one of the things, I mean, I drive down this all the time, but I was, my mind, mentally, I was putting Northern Oaks and Ivy Falls together because they're side by side, larger on the right-hand side of the road. And then when I was clocking the miles with my daughter, making the measurements, I realized that the two other subdivisions across the street, the Estates and Brentwood Estates are actually in between Ivy Falls and Northern Oaks. So you really, you're in a pickle because if you take both Northern Oaks and Ivy Falls, you got these other two, so you really, you got to do all four. You can't- You gotta keep it together.
Again, like that first scenario where you've got cars heading towards Dave's Creek, passing through an area-
passing through an area that's now Sharon. So you've got that.
Although the numbers for, I want to say for, across the street, the numbers for the two subdivisions, since they're kind of small, were roughly, I want to say a total of 30 or 50. It wasn't a huge number of students. So it wasn't, to add in the four subdivisions alone wasn't, I think it ended up being around 100 students, I want to say. It wasn't, all right. The other point that you made, let's see. All right, I'm just going through your bullet points here. This, I hadn't realized about the actual streams and using that as a natural buffer before when you were talking about the actual James Creek and using that to separate with Three Chimneys and Sharon.
And again, you know, James Creek was the original sort of boundary there on, was known as Three Chimneys Drive before it became Windermere Parkway and they built the bridge over. That was kind of dividing line, James Creek's dividing line between Windermere Parkway and Nichols Road, which kind of separates the Sharon and other areas in that direction.
Now here was the other, this is the one concept I hadn't, I, you threw out there was, if the idea was to keep the Old Atlanta subdivisions that had been more established and been in the community longer in there, the other option was to look at was to take and keep the East James Creek, our new name for them, and put them in Sharon instead. Now numerically, that was, that was something, again, I was trying to, we were trying to think outside the box, so I liked that idea. This is where my brain just shut off. Can you talk through the pros and cons of that and what that would do? Because that's where I just.
I really had to put the numbers together knowing that you've got the James Creek area. I think you've done, identified about 150 students in that side. And I can't remember.
I've got the nor, I've got all the other numbers if you need them.
From the old region numbers, I can look back.
Those four other subdivisions combined for a grand total of, I want to say 50, which is pretty low. Maybe, no, I'm sorry, I think it's a total of.
I'm looking at Dave's Creek relief to Sharon using the original current enrollment numbers was 167.
They were going from Dave's Creek to Sharon.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if I include any others. That was Dave's Creek to Sharon was 167 in the original with the current enrollment numbers projected for next year.
I think the only downside of that would be the distance.
Right, because you, James Creek is so close. And we've tried not to separate. I mean, we had to separate Windermere because it was so big. There's 15 essentially small subdivisions in there. Like I shattered it in on there and compared to, the James Creek area is a large, is a large number of kids because of townhouses and the density. But Windermere is much, much larger if you, if you look at it as far as subdivision wise.
And as committee, you know, as we kind of look, we got Windermere Parkway through Windermere. We got to Brandon Hall and then as we got James Creek, we just went, whoa, it's just a big number.
Right.
And it, we do still treat it as one subdivision in that discussion with us. So that's kind of what stopped us because it was such a make and break. If you go into James Creek, makes the number swing tremendously.
Exactly.
All right. So there is no perfect solution. Are we missing anything? Is there any other options?
I think we've pretty much covered what was covered with the bullet points as far as the crisscrossing with the traffic. And then like I said, if you look at the bulk numbers to compare, that would be your, your trade-off value of moving the Sharon Walk Old Atlanta folks back to Dave's Creek to then having to move somebody back in the back door to Sharon. And again, kind of awkward movement for them.
Well, if you could take one, the committee could just take one last look at that numbers of what it would be to move the east to Sharon and those four over this. I just need to look at that a little bit more. Thank you.
Thing about it is, they're both, those people in James Creek would be coming down Windermere and hitting Old Atlanta too. Is that correct or is there another way to get to Sharon? I guess you could go the back way.
It's hard because it's hard because if you're coming down, they did make a very bad point. When you're coming, if you're coming, if you're going down Old Atlanta in the morning and you're hitting that intersection where South Middle is, you're trying to get to Lambert, it's tough.
It is tough.
It's tough. And honestly, there's a lot of teenagers that, I do it because I do it. I'm coming the other way. And there's always teenagers that cut that intersection. They always have to be that last car to sneak through. And it's just, you know.
Accident waiting to happen.
It's a, it's a tough one. All right, thank you, Mr. Perkel.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Okay. So we ready to set in all the discussion?
Any other discussion on any other points?
No, I just, I think we need to know that we are, we're voting on draft two, but that is not the final.
That's right. Yeah, we're voting on the draft to put out to everybody for the forums in the next week, right?
Can you refresh the memory on the, the forums again, the dates and just the process?
South Forsyth at six and all the forums.
South Forsyth High School both nights, the 22nd is for elementary and then secondary is the 24th, which is Thursday. And then we just asked that if it's subdivisions or developments that they do get together and they're organized. And I believe if it's 10 minutes for developments, if they're organized, and then it's five minutes per individual. But if you go to the website and do forward slash redistricting, I have all of the speaker procedures on there too.
So they can come that night and sign up?
Yes.
And if perchance you're an elementary person and you can't make it because of soccer that Monday, you can come, or the two, whatever. You can come on the other night.
Yes.
It's nice if you can, but.
Yeah, they will sign up at the door and then what we'll do as a staff is that we organize it by subdivision. So you will hear the presentations by area or subdivision.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
And we do listen to everybody and we have in the past, we don't cut it off.
Yes, I believe in the past we've been there for approximately two hours.
Yeah.
At least.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Okay, all in favor of this draft? Okay. All righty. The next thing on our agenda under Action Adams is the GSBA legislative liaison.
Don't pick me. I'm saying maybe Kristen would like to do it. I don't know.
I like to do it and I think in some ways we'll get a double whammy because you know Ann's down there. I'm happy, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, so we're going to nominate Kristen.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Kristen Morrissey as our GSBA liaison.
Okay, a motion by Nancy to nominate Kristen and a second by Tom. All in favor? Unanimous, you win. Okay. And now we have points of information.
Yes, I'll just share one point of information with you. It's been a great year for Deborah Moore. Of course, every year is a great year for Deborah Moore at South Forsyth High School. But recently, the legislature established a Career and Technical Education Advisory Commission. And Deborah has been, her name has been recommended and she has been placed on this commission to represent Superintendent Barge and the Department of Education on this commission. So a great honor for Deborah and a great that Forsyth County Schools is represented on this commission in this way. So just thought we'd share that good news with you.
I'm not surprised. Okay, next we have executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimous.